Good evening. I call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order. It's 6:30. We are located in City Hall at the Council Chambers here in the city of Sammamish. The first item on the agenda tonight is a Rock Hall, so I'll start on my left.
Rashid O'Farrell.
Larry Crandall.
Shanna Collins.
Eric Brooks.
Jane Garrison.
Mark Baughman.
And that means all seven of us are present. So we have seven commissioners tonight. Welcome back to Rashid, who's been gone for a while. And yeah, it's nice to have everybody here. Okay, so next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the agenda is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the September 20th, 2018 regular meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Any revisions?
I move we approve the minutes of the, as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September 20th meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, that means that the minutes are approved unanimously. That's easy. Moving right along to public comment. This is the time where the public can speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during the non-agenda public comment section? Yes? Mr. Stickney? Oh, okay. Just remember to state your name and address before you begin speaking.
James Eastman, 196 Avenue Northeast. Just wanted to talk about being careful about what you approve. I think in politics, there's a history to say, hey, we need to approve this. This is an emergency. And we're going to tie it to this other thing that's really super important, but don't worry, we're going to get to that. And we'll prove that later, but right now, we've got to approve this. So how that relates to Sammamish. As you all know, we created the No Disturbance Overlay in 1995. Well, if you read the space and plan, it was an emergency, they had to approve it. But they said, hey, we're going to map every site as soon as we approve it. Well, guess what? No mapping was ever done. It's 2018, still no mapping. They also said, hey, there's 1,200 density units that we've got to transfer out of here because essentially, this is a rezone. So we need to create a TDR program to transfer the 1,200 units out. Guess what? Still no TDR process today. You might think there is. When you read the code, it looks like there is, but there really not. It's for King County, for their property outside, and that's all that's available right now. And that's, I don't know, 23 years later. Fast forward to when they enacted the pilot program. Before that, we had a critical areas review, and we redid the code. About two years of public input. They said, okay, we're going to create this pilot program. It's the right thing to do, but we're also going to create a wetland pilot program. Well, in the verbiage of the code, it said that the pilot programs would be enacted once the Shoreline Master Plan was approved. Well, it took three years to get the Shoreline Master Plan approved because it was tied to a wetland question that they had for the Department of Vicolade. So they finally get that approved, and the pilot program becomes available, and then they yank it. So, you know, after spending a lot of money and time, landowners in the no disturbance area are continually, you know, counting on these things to take place, and they just never do. They always just get yanked. So we had the hearing about a year and a half ago with you guys in the City Council on the pilot program. And they said, well, you can transfer your density out, or you can challenge the mapping. So, you know, I go and make plans to do that. And now we have another moratorium in place, which I'll speak about later. But, you know, when a city or a council promises something, or states it in writing, just be leery what you guys pass. And, you know, if they enact a tax that has a supposed to daylight, you know, what are the chances of that? It's always we reenact a tax for something else. So, you know, I hope you guys consider that in everything you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Mr. Stickney?
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney at 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I'm going to just give a little bit of an extemporaneous comment this evening. I'm not going to repeat the comment I gave to the City Council on Tuesday where, you know, presented the information in the packet I just handed out. As we've talked about this over the last year for housing strategy, a lot of the points, all I want to do is to show a few of these slides in the paper handout I gave you and focus on them. Let me see, how do I make a? There we go. Well, Kevin can change them for me. Let's go to slide number three. My key message as a summary, one slide back, please, is to put housing strategy plans and other plans that are heavily rooted in land use on hold, encourage the city to make changes to the comprehensive plan to change land use numbers and the policies to attain internal housing balance, and then pick up those housing strategy plans with sustainable and extraordinary advantages for the community. Okay, next slide. You've had this sheet in the past. Each of these, in my opinion, is extremely awesome for the city, and combined, to steal a comment from the old MasterCard ads, they are, I'll spit out the P, I want to say it, they are priceless. Okay, next slide. This is about housing retention, not attraction. It's about allowing people to stay in our community over time, and it's about only positives for our community, no negatives. Next slide. The circle of housing in Sammamish, I do want to chat about this for a second. Let's go to the next slide, Kevin. In 1999, the zone capacity is the larger green circle. Through character-based and environmentally-based regulation, the zone capacity for single-family housing has shrunk. I'm not talking about re-enabling the circle, leaving it where it is, but filling it in because it's never been filled in. There are housing types and kinds, needs and wants within our community because King County planned over a huge area, and the second, the city incorporated, our housing needs and supplies were out of balance with the new Sammamish line. That's all this is about. Next slide. Actually, let's go to slide number 11. The end game is a sustainable, two slides up, please. Number 11 down at the bottom, IA 11. It's about a sustainable Sammamish for enduring holistic sustainability, keeping our town strong. That's done by modestly optimizing the private-built environment by changing the comp plan for internal housing balance. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during the non-agenda public comment section?
I should have sent you a PowerPoint, but I'm going to show it to you and give it to you when I'm done. I think this may actually-
One second. Would you please state your name and address? Thank you.
Karen Herring, 23684 Southeast 32nd, Sammamish.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. The city should require safety first and require connectivity with all of the development in all areas of Sammamish. Sidewalks matter, and I'd like you to note where our development code requirements are failing citizens, like my neighbors. We live in an older neighborhood and one that I walk every foot, every day, for many, many miles, for many, many years. Development has come to call, and the results are ridiculous and even dangerous, and I'd like you to take a look. This is the Buckin sidewalk. It just stops at the end of the development with a sign that says sidewalk ends, and I will give you this packet when I leave. This is Crown Field. There's a sidewalk end that walks right into a power line pole or a telephone pole with a giant red barrier, and this is required because it's on our code. This is going to be hard to see, but on the other side of Buckin, on a minor arterial, we call the 32nd Street Freeway, where kids, moms, dads, grandmas, dogs, strollers, even bikes traverse to Sunny Hills, Pine Lake, or the high school bus, or go for a run, a walk, and folks often are walking to the nearby shopping. The Buckin Development put a sidewalk for probably two blocks, ended it right in the bike lane on 32nd. There's no way to cross into the trail because it's a freeway. I take this walk every day almost. This day was garbage day. I'm able to draw, sorry, dodge traffic, but imagine a kid on a bike or a pack of littles heading to school on foot or wheels. At least a 20 mile per hour light is there for school times. The runner and the photographer, which would be me, made it to the sidewalk that is another half block away. This is trash bins in the bike lane. There are giant construction tops flying by trucks, flying by us as we're walking down this bike lane to get to 32nd. We're on, and finally, development should require safety first. It's the job of government to protect her citizens. The next crosswalk from this development is less than two blocks from the approved development. Require our development, make connectivity to the next safe, traversable side crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I bring these to you?
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak during this time? Okay. Then public comment is now closed. And of course, I just logged out of my agenda. Okay. So the next item of business is new business, and tonight, we are going to have a work session on the interim development regulations. They are the emergency regulations that were passed by the City Council, I want to say, two weeks ago, maybe a little bit more. Tonight, we are lucky to have Deputy Director David Pyle here to give us a presentation on these regulations. And this is supposed to be really informal. We can ask questions. There's no vote. There's no, nothing we have to do, just listen and ask good questions. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Collins, members of the commission. David Pyle, Deputy Director, Community Development Department. And with me tonight, I have Sarah Estery, who is one of our management analysts who we are fortunate to have working for the city, supporting us in the work that we do. So we have a short presentation for you tonight, which we will follow with sort of a question and answer conversation about these interim regulations that were passed by the City Council on September 18th as part of an emergency ordinance. And we will first walk through each of the major topic areas of changes that were made with the interim regulations, and we will also try to, I guess, infuse in the conversation a relationship to the housing strategy work that you have recently been working on, with the idea that we are listening to what you're doing, and we are trying to find ways to continually move forward with improving our regulations so that we have better outcomes here in the city. As, you know, we all hear from citizens regularly, whether in the forum of a public hearing with the hearing examiner, whether through public comment with the City Council, or here with the Planning Commission, or whether through phone calls that we receive, letters we receive, public comments we receive on projects. And I myself have spent many hours standing in existing homes, looking out windows, standing in backyards, looking at fences and topographic changes, and trying to analyze how our codes that we have had in place here for quite some time are allowing for a certain form of development to continue to forge ahead here in the city, and trying to look for ways to make modest changes to our codes that provide for significant, meaningful changes to those people who will be living next to future developments or within future developments in the city. So it's that body of information that we have carried into this, and we, you know, carry that pretty heavily here. We do hear quite a bit from members of the community, especially as we go through large development pushes or phases here in the city. So with that, start the presentation. On the agenda tonight, as I mentioned, is a Housing Strategy and Development Regulations Crosswalk, which is something that Sarah and another of our management analysts, Miriam, had put together for you to try to highlight how these changes interrelate to the housing strategy work that's been done. We will talk about then setbacks, building height, building facade, mask rating, parking, fences, street frontage, and density, which are the topic areas that are represented in the code changes made under the interim code changes passed last, I guess, two weeks ago, Tuesday. So with that, there is an exhibit in the agenda memo tonight, which I believe to be Exhibit 2. Just check. Yes, Exhibit 2, which is a spreadsheet that identifies some of the housing strategies that you have discussed and identifies how some of these code changes might relate to those housing strategies. Some of the examples, and I printed out the packet, and I realized that what was pushed forward was A1 through A3, which is Exhibit 2 in your packet. And the Housing Strategy Crosswalk spreadsheet is actually much larger, although there weren't as many relevant interim development regulations that relate to some of the other items that were included with the housing strategies. So really, we're focusing on A1 to A3, which include community design standards, subarea plans, and subdivision code updates, excuse me, A1 and A3. And the biggest of those is the subdivision code update and how these interim regulations relate to subdivision code update. We do have on our work plan for, I guess, the first, to begin in the first quarter of 2019, a fairly substantial project where we will undertake the rewriting of our subdivision code and some of the relevant zoning controls and the relevant procedural requirements for those types of projects. So what you're seeing here sort of is a precursor to that project that is slated to begin just right around the corner in the first quarter of 2019. We are currently assessing staffing needs and consultant needs for that, and we are preparing to ramp up for that. So with that, I'll move into the first topic area, which is setbacks. Setbacks in the city of Sammamish have historically utilized a street setback and an interior setback. One of the problems with that is that it has allowed for massing of homes into certain corners of the yard or a lot that's being created that might impact one existing homeowner more than another existing homeowner. Further, the setbacks that have been utilized here in the city have been smaller than those applied in other jurisdictions, other comparable jurisdictions. And what we looked at was trying to establish a new pattern through a change in setback regulations that would, I guess, require that any new development would have a street setback or a front yard, and then a rear yard opposite that in the back, and then a side yard, and that the front yard, being the street setback, and the rear yard are fairly predictable with regard to usable space in the yard, but that the side yard is something that is flexible in that it's an aggregate setback, so a builder could locate a home and push it one way or the other to the side. But those lots that are existing, existing development, which might be to the back of the lot, would be protected somewhat by a standard applicable rear setback. One of the problems that we see out in development is that a developer might prefer to push exist, or the proposed homes completely to the rear, so there's just a five-foot setback off of existing development, and that's a fairly large impact to the patterns that we have in place already. And it has caused for privacy issues. It has caused for tree retention issues where somebody on an existing lot might have a really large tree in their backyard that's sort of right along the property line, and when the builder goes in to build a new home just five feet off of that property line, they're cutting all the roots of that tree, but our tree rules don't require that we protect that tree. So in looking at these rules, understand that they all work, there's interrelatedness between these rules. So when we're looking at making these changes, we're considering how these changes might also facilitate achieving other goals that are in our code, like tree retention, for example. Another problem we have is with these limited small setbacks, there's not a lot of yard space left for people to use their yards or for other requirements that our codes require, such as low-impact development, infiltration, vegetated flow paths, those types of things. So we're constantly battling with when these types of projects come in for single-family home building permit. We are required at that point to do a second round of review with regard to stormwater. So we're then having to find ways to shoehorn in these different low-impact development requirements for infiltration facilities, and there's just no space to put them. So it ultimately becomes a major challenge for us, and we are constantly being put in, you know, in a difficult position with builders because they're trying to stretch every square inch of these properties to locate something there. And so as we move through this, you'll see how these are interrelated and with regard to many of the different phases of development review that we go through, and we've assessed that and have realized that some of these changes will facilitate meeting multiple objectives. This is an example of the existing, I guess, long-term rules that we've had and the proposed interim regulations. Now, understand that our setbacks were changed, I think, in 2016. We did have a mild change through a neighborhood character initiative that some staff had worked on, and we moved to a 7, 5, and 10, or excuse me, a 5, 7, and 15, but there was still no dedication of a rear setback, which is still problematic for us. So by dedicating a rear setback as described, it provides for predictability as to where that yard area will be located. You can see also that with a 40 by 60 footprint, so 2,400 square feet, you could still build, you know, a two-story home, 4,800 square feet on an R4 lot. The lot size ultimately would have to be bigger. So that's one of the outcomes as well, is that we do end up with larger lots. And in our four-zone, 6,800-square-foot lot is still considered small compared to other jurisdictions and what their minimum lot standards are for minimum lot size. So these are still fairly small lots compared to other jurisdictions, which actually have a minimum lot size requirement.
David, can I ask a quick question? Sorry. So on the first figure, it shows interior setback, and then the second, of course, it's side. Can you help me understand what the difference is?
Yeah, so the code, the old version of the code that we have been using for some time did not discern between the side and the rear. It allowed the builder to choose where to apply the 7, the 5, and the 15. The code, what we've done is we've eliminated the term interior setback and replaced it with two different terms. One is side, and one is rear. And by doing so, we've required that the rear be placed opposite the street because it provides for some additional protection to existing development. Most often, you see the rear lot, you see a street, and then there'll be a lot created, and then behind that lot will be existing development. So one of the ways to protect that is by providing a requirement that we have a 25-foot rear yard setback, which provides some separation between the developments.
I have a question. On the, you're proposing, is that 65-foot lot width, is that a minimum?
No, the code minimum would be 30 feet. This is just an example. What we did was we created a standard footprint of 40 by 60, and we worked off of that, and we compared a 40 by 60 footprint, the old rules compared to the interim regulations. Now, we don't have a, you know, the lot, the lot, we tried, when we were working with these rules and trying to figure out the simple changes we could make, one of the objectives was the least amount of text change in the code. Another objective was actually, I guess, not having to change other rules and having things be compatible still. So in this case, by simply changing the, how we manage setbacks, we also were able to achieve a slightly larger lot. We also were able to achieve additional space between buildings, and we still are compatible with our minimum lot widths and our minimum lot depths.
David, I have a question for you. Any particular reason why we don't have a minimum lot size? Is that something we inherited from King County? Is that a decision as a city we made?
That's something that we inherited.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that, is that a good thing? Is that something we need to look at down the road, having a minimum lot size in our city?
It is something that we will be looking at with our subdivision update.
Okay.
It's more complicated.
Yeah.
Because when you have a minimum lot size, then you start to get into a conflict between a density calculation and a actual minimum lot square footage calculation. So the question is, which one really controls density?
Okay.
Because you might be allowed to get a certain number of units, but you might not be able to achieve that number of units because the minimum lot size ultimately trumps the density. So other cities have a requirement that you have to meet both, for example. It's fairly common. So we'll be looking at those examples and bringing those forward for discussions around our zoning controls when we come back with the subdivision code update. And at that point, we'll be asking our advisory-appointed officials, yourselves, to help guide us through that process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, do these regulations apply to, so if someone has an-
Well, do these regulations apply to, so if someone has an existing lot and they want it in addition to their house, are they subject to these setbacks?
That's a great question. So, so it's important to understand, there's, there's two essential buckets that you can put development into here in the city. One bucket is the subdivision process and lots that have recently been subdivided or are going through the subdivision process, and what rules would apply to that development. The other bucket is those lots that have been around for quite some time, you know, I would say lots that were created and are more than seven years old, for example. So if you go, if you look at subdivision lots, it's important to understand that projects vest backwards and forwards. And what I mean by that is that when someone comes in and applies for a preliminary subdivision, and we determine their application to be complete for the purpose of processing, meaning they have all of the required pieces of information, we then vest them to a snapshot of the codes that are in place at the time of the complete application. So what happens then is the project is now sort of locked in to those rules. They then have a certain time limitation by which they are able to have their subdivision processed going forward. So we work on their preliminary subdivision with them, and if they don't make all the revisions and corrections that we need for us to approve their preliminary subdivision, it just simply expires, it dies on the vine, if you will. And we have done that to applicants. If applicants perform and they actually meet the timeline requirements for submittal of supplemental information or changes to their projects, then we do go ahead and, and they do meet our codes, we do make a recommendation to the hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner would then approve or deny a preliminary subdivision. At the point where the hearing examiner approves a preliminary subdivision, so that might take, for example, a year to get from the point of complete application to a hearing with the hearing examiner, a year, year and a half for a subdivision, that's about normal, they're complicated projects. So realize that they're still vested to that point in time when they made a complete application. So then the staff will make, well, the hearing examiner will approve the project, assuming the examiner approves it, and it then, they then have five years to build the required improvements that are necessary for them to have a final subdivision. So a preliminary subdivision is only a planning-level approval. It's not an actual creation of real-tax parcels. Real-tax parcels are created at the point of final plat or final subdivision, and those are allowed to be created after all of the required infrastructure improvements have been made, all of the life safety issues have been addressed, stormwater's in, sewer's in, water's in, fire hydrants are in, sidewalks are in, driveway aprons are in, roads are built, any intersection improvements are done, stoplights, stop signs, all those sorts of things are done. And we expect those to be done, then we would, they have five years to do that. So now realize that it took them a year and a half to get through preliminary subdivision approval. Now they have five years to build it, and we commonly see these things take two to three years to be built. So say on the, on the far end, five years. So now you're six and a half years from the date of complete application, so you're still vested to those rules that were in place at the time of complete application. So then what happens is you come in for final plat, final subdivision, and you, you assumingly get approved because you've made all your improvements, invested a lot of time and money into building it. Then it gets recorded, and the real, the real-tax parcels are created at that point in time. So now you have, say, one or two big lots that are turned into 30 small lots, right? So now you can file for individual, single-family building permits to build on those lots. Whereas, we don't allow for you to submit applications to build on lots that are not created. You can't file for a building permit to build a house on a lot you don't have. Simple, pretty simple. For some reason, builders don't always understand that, but simple. So, so what, what happens now is you come in to file for your building permits, well, you are now vested forward for another five years to build those lots under the same regulations that were in place at the time when you filed complete preliminary subdivision application. So as you can see, this can go on for up to 12 years following, you know, even longer in some cases, following the point of complete application. So we, we're looking at rules right now, we're talking about rules right now, that we might not actually see hit the ground and take effect for the purpose of that bucket of projects in the city, subdivisions, new homes being built on new lots. It will take quite a long time for those rules to actually materialize in, in what you're seeing out there being built. Now realize, these are not the city's rules we're talking about. This is state law. So the city doesn't have the ability to come in and say, hey, we only want to make this good for one year, you know, we want to make, make it so that it changes. These protections are something that the development community has hard, hard-won through, you know, legislative changes. So these are what we deal with here in the city. Not many people, I think, understand this because we get a lot of complaints about stuff that's being built from permits that were submitted in 2007, you know, and, and we're still seeing that stuff be built. With regard to those lots that are not in that bucket, that are in the other bucket, which are the existing lots, they've been around for seven years, we'll say, because at that point, they've lost their protection under their vesting, and now the new rules apply, or their old lots that have just been vacant and somebody has held on to for whatever reason and kept it vacant. These rules would also, these rules would immediately apply to those when you came in to apply for building permit. Now, understand that within the code and within Exhibit One, in your, in your staff report, or in the, in the, what are we calling it? In the agenda bill, that within Exhibit One, there's a section that happens to also just be in there, and it, the code offers an administrative adjustment of setbacks. So the way we see this is that there's sort of three tiers of applying setbacks in the city. There's the standard application of setbacks, which you, you have to conform, if you can conform, you apply the setbacks. Then there's the administrative adjustment of setbacks, which, which through certain types of projects, if it was like a reasonable use exception, or something administrative in nature, where we had a discretionary decision, where we would issue a decision and it's appealable, has public comment, all those things, we can actually apply an adjustment to those setbacks in order to make the project work. The third is a variance. So there are instances where we realize that changes made to code that affect the usability of property is a hardship to that property, and we would definitely support going through the variance process. We have, our staff have gotten pretty streamlined with regard to variances, and we can process those fairly quickly, and we have in, just recently on a few scenarios where we've realized that there are properties that are restricted in ways that no one ever would have thought, and it does present a true hardship and is not a grant of special privilege to that property by granting them an exception to the rule. The next one, this is one we hear a lot about, is that the old rules allowed for homes to be measured based on average finished grade. And what happened here was, is we started to see this trend occurring in the city, and it has happened in other cities as well in the same manner, that builders were coming in and mounding up dirt on properties and artificially raising the grade of the property. You know, there might be functional reasons behind that in some instances. In other instances, we've also noted that, that builders who own much, who own multiple sites in the city are moving a lot of dirt around in the city, and we don't even really know about it. So they might be stripping dirt off one site in order to adjust the grade and dumping it on another site that they're building and raising up the grade because it's cheaper than getting rid of the dirt somewhere else outside of the city, or finding a receiving site to send it to. So in some instances, we see the grade where new homes are being built be artificially raised, you know, we've seen two feet, five feet, 10 feet, where it's significantly altered. And what happens then is that it allows them to build a 35-foot-tall home on top of the mounded-up artificially regraded site. So if you're living in a community and, you know, your, your natural topography, the way homes used to be built was they, they really minimized the grade as much as possible long ago, and they've built homes to fit into the, the natural topography. And you're surrounded by homes that are, say, one or two stories, built on the, the prior native grade, and somebody comes in and mounds up, you know, five feet, and then they build a three-story home on it. You're now faced with a fairly large house right next door, and say that's five feet off your property line because they, they use that five-foot setback there. So this one is one we have had quite a few problems with here in the city. One other partner change, which you'll see down the line here, is we, we're also, we also increased the fence height. One of the problems we have had is when this type of grading occurs, someone building a six-foot fence on the edge of their property doesn't really provide, if you think about geometry, them any privacy. So we've had builders who are building these new houses say, hey, I'd be happy to build a 10-foot fence for that neighbor to fix the problem, but your code only lets me build a six-foot fence. So we end up with, you know, really what the intent of a fence is, well, there's multiple purposes there, one of them is privacy. So we'll get to that one in a minute, but understand again that there are interrelated things going on here due to some of the problems we've been facing. So what we're talking about is measuring off average existing grade. So what you're required to do is when you go out to, to design your home, you go out with a surveyor and you pick up points on the property, and you build a profile of that property. And then you are required to, based on sort of the boundary of the home, measure the average points of where that home will connect to the existing ground. And you can modify your grade, but we're going to restrict the height of your house based on the, the topography that was there before you started manipulating your grade. And, and many, many cities have, have been applying this, and it's been fairly successful. And what it does is it, it cuts down on that artificial regrading that we're seeing, and it also helps retain the scale and proportion of buildings between old development and new development. So it helps maintain the character across generations in, in construction. One of the problems that we face with this, and where, where some of the complexity in applying this is, is that the staff have to retool internally with how we review applications, and we also have to retool our, our survey standards because surveyors can actually go out and manipulate the profile to the advantage of the builder to make it tall again. So there are little tricks that I've learned over the years that they're applying, so we now have to go back out and, and fix things like survey standards, where we require that they collect points on a specified grid, and they give us a, a point map that shows where all their elevation points were taken, so that we know they're not taking a point over here and a point over here, and interpolating everything in between to the advantage of the ultimate height of the building.
So how do you handle if somebody doesn't provide the appropriate surveying? I mean, if you go, if they, I can certainly envision, oh, gosh, we started working over there, and the guys accidentally went too far, and now we don't know what the grades were. How do you handle that?
So, so yeah, so that's, the good news is, is that this is a requirement that we will be using this, we will be using this information for review of projects before they start digging. Then we're, we can require, and we, we always have had the requirement that someone who's building a home to a certain height have a, a sort of an as-built survey done, so we can work. And surveyors are familiar with this because other cities have been doing it. So what we would do is we would ask for a surveyor to verify, field verify, that based on the benchmark point that they're measuring from monument. So, so what happens is, with surveyors, is, is they go out in the, in space, right, and they pick up these monuments that the city has throughout the city and the street or whatever. Many of you might know this, I'm sorry if I'm telling you things you already know, but what happens with a surveyor goes out and they pick up a point that's a known point in space, X, Y, and Z. So you know your coordinates and your elevation. And then what they do is they use the legal description of the property, the meets and bounds, you know, this many feet this way, this many feet that way, and they actually shoot a line back to the property from that point in space. Then they drop a benchmark on that site, which becomes their bearing point for their whole project. And then typically now, it's all electronics, so they use something that might be called one, one method is a total station, where what they do is they set up a, a benchmark monument that is their bearing point in one area on the property where they will not be digging or modifying anything, so that stays for the whole project. That's their control point. And then they have these electronic staff gauges, and they can walk around the property and just click a button, and they can do it in a pattern. So, so what happens is, is we have these, these methods that surveyors apply in the field that we can use, and we can ask them to go out and pick up the points and see, you know, where, they can put the point right on the foundation of the house and see where it's at, and they can profile it as compared to what the native grade was in the, in before.
Basically, though, the process is set up so that in the, in the flow, this has to be done before anything physically can start.
Yes, that's correct. Yep. So, sorry to overexplain the survey thing, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Whenever you introduce kind of a new step like that, it seems easy for people to blow past it accidentally, and then it doesn't do you any good, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely, with these types of changes, we are definitely having to retrain internally to make sure that our staff are paying attention to pieces of information that might have been important in the past but are now much more important that we screen and we pay attention to when stuff comes in the door. The next is, this just shows what might be achievable with average existing grade. One of the concerns that we had was that are we artificially constraining the size of a home by requiring that they use average existing grade for homes that might be on a slope? This is an example of type of construction you might see where the foundation walls are actually being used as retaining walls, and where you can get quite a bit of volume in that home by simply keying it into the hill as opposed to mounding up dirt and flattening it like you do here. So if you do this instead, there are ways to build a home to get quite a bit of volume out of it. Another problem we've had is with regard to large walls that are being built next to existing development. And what this does is it blocks solar access, it just is sort of an encroachment into someone's space. So what we're proposing is that, and this is an exaggeration, so this is just meant, meant to get the point across, we're proposing some sort of architectural modulation of the wall that would allow, require that you break it up so that it's not just a giant mono wall that's next to someone's home. This has been applied by other jurisdictions. Most of these changes that we're, we have here are ones that we have found that other jurisdictions have applied, and we have called them and talked to them about how they've been working for them. The next one is a big one here in the city. This is mass grating. And this is where builders prefer, for some reason, to go in and strip out the site and grade it out so that it's more or less flat. And I guess the reason behind this is, it's been explained to me, is that a builder wants to have the ability to bring in a wider potential customer base. So what they do is they allow for a potential home purchaser to choose a site in the development where they think they might want to be located, so the corner lot over there, or, you know, that side over there, for whatever reason. Lots are different priced based on their size, based on their, whether they back up to a open-space tract or something. And then what they're able to do is because they've mass graded out the site, and they have these building pads that are sort of generic-sized building pads, then the potential home buyer can choose the home product that they want to put on it. And they might have five or six different models of homes that they can put on that site. So, so instead of more custom-style architecture that you might see that matches the existing landscape and the existing grade, you're seeing more generic-style architecture where somebody has the ability to choose one of five or six different homes that they want to, they might want to buy. And what that does is, is it increases the probability that they can make the sale because they're able to offer quite a bit of empowerment in the decision-making process to the, to the purchaser, they're able to meet everyone's needs, which is, there's value in that. However, the side effect is, is that in order to set up a site so that you have that sales platform, if you will, it causes quite a bit of damage to the character of the community, and we've had And we've had a lot of difficulty in implying our tree protection rules when this type of activity is going on. Further, it also becomes difficult for us to apply the infiltration requirements, the low-impact development requirements that are required of new homes when they're put on the lots at the later, the next phase in development review, because the landscape has largely been manipulated and the native soils, which might have offered a higher rate of infiltration, have been modified, the soil pad's been removed, there's all sorts of impact to that soil that's occurred. So what we're proposing is limiting mass grading and strategically grading sites so that they don't need to be as widely graded as we've seen, where they might be able to look at home, different home choices that actually are more appropriate to the existing topography and might match better the existing sort of lay of the land, if you will.
One question I had about this, which is maybe a tangent, I'm not sure, but it seems that we end up intentionally leaving more of the existing grade. Is there any potential, so I was thinking about the 42nd Street, I think it's 42nd Street barricade. And one of the reasons that that barricade is there is because the grading was actually not done properly, and that's a horrible situation that was really not managed the right way. Is there a potential to create problems where you transition into, in other words, can we be paying attention and force the builder to do something that actually almost might violate this but creates a more safe condition between a new development and an existing development?
Yes, so this one is an interesting one, mass grading and that question that you have and how things tie together. Also, the functionality of a site might depend on grading, you know, gravity. You want to be able to serve every lot with sewer and stormwater and make your stormwater vault work in the right place, you know, multiple objectives, right? So what we found is in drafting this rule, if you look at Exhibit 1 and that title, the first page, the first Title 16, you'll see that it allows for flexibility to be applied by the director. So we have these hard limits, but it also says that we can grant exceptions to this. What this does is it sort of sets, it sets the expectation of really minimizing your grading, and it allows us to ask builders to provide justifications if they want to exceed what the baseline is that's set. In the past, the staff have had few tools in the toolbox by which to affect change in development review. We haven't really had design review powers applied in our code. And we're trying to, we don't really want the subjective judgment role, we just want to be able to ask a builder, you know, hey, you want to, you want to cut more of that or you want to build up more of that? Why? Whereas we haven't had that ability in the past in our code. The next one is one that we hear a lot about, parking. Our rules only require that developments account for two off-street parking spaces per new single-family residence that's being built. Oftentimes, in an effort to minimize asphalt, because with asphalt comes stormwater, so multiple objectives again, we see roads that are built that are undersized for the, for what the development really needs with regard to parking, especially with the census that Sammamish has with the number of people per home and the teenagers in the city, you know, there's definitely more than two cars in some of the houses here, I would say. And then when somebody has a party or, you know, family over or something, where do they park when there's a street that has no parking on it? So we're either setting them up to violate our parking rules and create an unsafe condition in the event that a fire apparatus needs to come down the road and it's blocked by cars, or we're creating an environment where neighbors are arguing with each other over whose car is that, move it. We hear everything. So understand that it's one thing for us to review these projects for compliance with the code, it's another thing for us to own these projects for the life of the project and have to deal with the consequences that come with them on a daily basis as we field phone calls from citizens who want an answer as to why this is the way that it is. So it's not just the review of the project, it's sort of the life cycle of the project and all that goes along with it for us. And it does constitute quite a bit of our work in even things that are built 10 years ago, we have neighbors that don't get along and we end up getting put in the middle of it, having to mediate it somehow. So our proposal here.
Can I ask, this is probably a Public Works question, but is that gutter detail still in our standard details?
That is a rolled curb and it is not in our detail.
It's not allowed anymore?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, when you talk about parking issues, all that happens in that neighborhood is everybody parks on the sidewalk.
Correct, which is one reason why Public Works does not allow a rolled curb.
Thank you, good.
Yeah. We do still see them being built in those areas that we inherited from the county. So Mystic Lake, for example, or I guess it's Canterbury up on 244th. There's also a couple phases of new King County development that we'll probably be seeing up right across from the Maintenance and Operations Center that's not in the city's jurisdiction, where they'll still be applying these substandard roads and rolled curbs. So the county still does allow it. So what we're proposing is, number one, that we work with builders to be more strategic about where we place driveways, because you can't park opposite a driveway. The Public Works standards require that you sign it, no parking, and it just doesn't function. So if we look more, I guess, if we look more wisely at how we place the driveway aprons in these designs across from each other instead of across in a staggered manner, you could actually accommodate more parking because you're not restricted opposite the driveway from applying a parking space. Another one as to how this, so what we're proposing is that we include as part of the development, in addition to the two off-street parking spaces that are already required, one additional or equivalent of one additional on-street parking space, which might be in the form of an actual on-street parking space, or it might be in the form of, as these white arrows point to, this is actually a project up in Snohomish County that I'm aware of that I just knew about that actually is my friend's house is on the corner up there. They use this tot lot, parking lot, as overflow parking in their neighborhood, and you can accommodate about 10 cars in that parking lot. So what happens is instead of people, you know, parking where they shouldn't on the street in a no fire, no parking fire lane area, they're actually out there parking, parking in the tot lot, and that's something that the community has put in place and it works pretty well. This other one with the blue arrows is a recently approved project where we actually were able to convince the builder to do more than the minimum and put in parking, additional parking bulbouts. And this is the Carrier preliminary subdivision that's just right down there next to Big Rock Park. And you can see how that might work where if you had the typical road section, they've actually widened it in a few areas to allow for some additional parking spaces. The next one, which I talked about previously, is fences. And we are proposing increasing the height of fences along the side yard and rear yard setback, but not, but actually lowering it in the street setback. So what happens here is that if you want to build a fence within, anywhere in the street setback, you're required to limit it to four feet. But if you wanted to build a fence sort of at the face of the house back, you could build it up to eight feet within the setback. Now, understand that anything over six feet requires a building permit. So we don't anticipate that we will get a high volume of eight-foot-tall fences. Actually, we think it will seldomly be applied because someone has to actually go through that additional step of acquiring a building permit to build it, because they have to show us how they're building it and what materials they're using and show us that it's not going to fall over. But in the case of a six-foot fence, you could still put it up without any building permit on your property line and it wouldn't be a problem. The reason why we increased it to eight feet was because we have firsthand witnessed many scenarios through the city where if they had a foot or two of additional fence height, it might provide them that, just a little bit of privacy to use their patio so that their neighbors washing dishes at their kitchen sink and not looking straight at them out, you know, 10 feet away out there, at their patio. So this is one that we've done a lot of analysis around, and I've actually stood in many people's backyards and seen exactly what they're talking about when they have a six-foot fence. And they've shown me by stapling up to the fence, if they just had an additional two feet, that they could actually achieve that privacy that they're looking for in their backyard.
Is this broadly applied, so new or anybody that builds a fence in their backyard, or is this only new or?
This one could be broadly applied to anybody building a fence.
David, can I ask you? When I think about the street setback, I always think about 228, and I think about the homes that are built along 228, namely Highcroft, for example, those developments where on 228 we're seeing the back of a person's home, and you see the back elevation, you see their fence, and they have trees and what have you planted between the sidewalk and the home. So I see then, when we're having the street setback, the fence would only be four feet. In a situation like that, could we be looking at a four-foot-high fence looking into the back of somebody's home on 228?
So the answer there, yeah, the answer there lies in how we assign setbacks.
Okay.
So in that scenario, I believe you would be calling the front yard where somebody takes access from, to the home as the street setback.
Okay, I get you.
In that case, it would be the rear yard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So that we would look to the designation of, and the definitions of street setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback as to how we would apply that.
Okay, so then you would say, in a case like, it would be a development like that on Highcroft, the street setback would be at the front of the house and the street is the residential street as opposed to the public street, like 228?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And different cities handle that different ways. I've experienced rules in other cities where they would have called both sides the street setback.
Okay.
It's just here in Sammamish, we happen to have called, previously we would have called that the interior setback, and the street setback would still have been the side where they take access to the property from.
Okay, okay, thank you.
David, I have a very elementary question. Are fences required for single-family homes, or is this optional?
Optional.
Okay, thanks.
So it kind of, my comment kind of speaks to the last comment about, in that case, so these are, these are maximum, not a requirement that you build a fence, but in the case that Spence is talking about, with Highcroft, there might be a desire to have that requirement for a fence that's eight-foot-tall on there. It was back to the community character discussions we had in the past, it's like, are we trying to help the view from the street or the view from the home and which, you know, it's kind of which way are you looking at it type of thing? So don't mean to complicate the whole fence issue, but it does mean that that's the maximum height that you can build. It doesn't say you have to build that fence. And then on the front, the same way with the front, you're just, maximum height is four foot, you don't have to build a fence, both cases.
Yeah, you don't, you wouldn't have to build a fence. And with the, with the actual subdivision rewrite that we'll be bringing back to you, we will definitely want to revisit this as to whether, you know, this is appropriate. And it's possible that, you know, other cities offer criteria for when you can deviate along the street setback and build a taller fence, you know. There are instances where we might want to allow somebody for the purpose of headlights, for example, you know, a roundabout, you know, where the car goes around the roundabout and every time a car goes around, it shines its headlights in someone's bedroom window. Well, maybe we want to let somebody build a six-foot-taller or an eight-foot-tall fence in that instance in order to screen that. There's all sorts of scenarios we come across, and these rules don't fit all scenarios. So we have to either have the ability to interpret them and apply them, or we have to have some form of flexibility built into them. And, you know, we have examples from other cities we can look at as to how those have worked, and we can call them and ask them, hey, what is the outcome? Do you have an example in your city of a bad outcome, an example of a good outcome? And we can take pictures of it and bring it back to you, that kind of thing.
Are we still in the, yes, we are.
Yeah, the next one is street frontage, and this is a big one here. This slide demonstrates one of the problems that we see. This is a fairly common occurrence where we'll see a subdivision go in with minimal road improvement and where they're using a private shared driveway or shared road to service the bulk of the homes in the division. And why this is complicated is because we end up, again, inheriting a lot of these problems down the line and have to deal with the implications of this. In this instance, two things that we regularly hear about is the massing of trash cans and the problem that that creates with regard to the usability of that cul-de-sac. So you might see that there are, you know, on a recycle day and a trash day that happened to correspond, you know, there's, you know, if there's, what, seven homes there, you might see 14 large cans massed right there at the end of that cul-de-sac. And that's a big problem. It's unsightly, it's difficult to navigate.
With yard waste, it's 21.
21. So, and then the other problem we have is people don't want to haul them back to their house, so they end up leaving them there. The other problem that we have, which we hear a lot about during the winter season, which we're coming up on now, is people calling us, asking us when they're going to plow, we're going to plow their driveway for them. So we've had people stuck in those back ends of those homes because they couldn't get out, because there was an icy snowpack that was blocking their way to the road and the city came out and plowed the cul-de-sac but didn't plow their access back. So, you know, we have to deal with that. And what happens in the case of a 911 call when somebody doesn't have a plowed road going back to their, say there's six homes, say it's longer than that, twice as long, and the last home has a, you know, a 911 call, how does the aid car get back there? You know, these are, these are real problems that we see here, and we might see this as a viable development pattern, but we end up living with the consequence down the line in how usable this is really in the long run. This is an example of a project that has street frontage. So what the proposal is, is that every new lot created has 30 feet of street frontage, which is the minimum lot width requirement. So in this instance, you can see how different this pattern is because every home has a street frontage. Now, what might happen here is you might hear a developer come in and say, well, hey, I can't build my project now. Well, maybe, but one of the, one of the things we've seen also is, is that they go out and they acquire the lot next door, and now it works. It might just not be ripe for development to make a development that makes sense. We've seen developers acquire land through contract and try and build on what they have, and it just doesn't work. And they end up with some designs that are really undesirable, but if they were able to acquire the property next door, well, then suddenly they can make it work. We understand that that's complex because you're dealing with land acquisition, but there are times when just because you're able to acquire one or two lots that are of a certain geometry, doesn't mean that the project really is ripe for development. So it's really the right development with the right design is what we're looking for. And, you know, we might be able to torture our code, so to speak, to find a way to make something work, but then again, we live with the consequence down the line when something is undesirable. The last one is a fairly big one in that the city of Sammamish has historically rounded up in density. And that is if you have a certain size lot that would yield you, in this case, 4.52 units, you get five units. Other cities don't do this, other cities round down. You have to have a whole unit to get a unit of density. So what this is saying is, is that if you wanted to get five units, you'd have to have five or 5.01 or 5.6. What this is saying is, is if you had 4.99, you wouldn't get five, you'd get four. And again, it goes back to the ripeness and appropriateness of the development in that if you don't have enough land to make it work, maybe you should wait to build on it or try and acquire more land to make it work. And I know saying that sounds simple, but it's actually very complex for builders. And I know, saying that sounds simple, but it's actually very complex for builders. I understand what they're, what they're faced with, but we also want projects here in the city that make sense, and are, have a design that is something that will actually add value to the community, not make it more difficult for us to manage all of these projects that somehow don't quite meet our stand, you know, they meet our standards, but they don't quite work. So that's the last of them, and I am happy to field any questions, or discuss with you any additional topics you'd like to talk about.
So, David, how does this, how would these new regulations affect ADUs?
These new regulations, thank you for asking that, it's a great question. ADUs would be required to conform to the same setbacks as a standard home. So what you might see is that if someone was trying to put an ADU, say, in the back corner of their property, there might be some additional spatial separation requirements. It might be harder to fit that ADU back there as compared to what the previous rules allowed. We didn't change any of the lot coverage restrictions, meaning structural lot coverage or impervious surface restrictions. We simply increased, we reoriented how we dedicate, how we assign setbacks, and we increased the numeric value of those setbacks and distance. So that would be one way ADUs would be affected. Another one would be, is with regard to height, if you were trying to build something on top of a mounded lot, you wouldn't be able to go as high as you would have previously.
I was wondering if you, well, first of all, I want to say, you know, thanks for taking, you know, the interrelated approach, I think is, was, is great. I think there's a lot of opportunities there. I was wondering how many, so in the, in our packet that we got, second page, it talks about the effective date, and talks about a little, you talked a little bit about this vesting notion. I was wondering how many, how many projects have been kind of not vested to prior regulations that are currently in the pipeline, just to kind of understand, you know, this, this, I think that's the big thing, is this timeline, this 12-year timeline. People see the effects of something that happened a long time ago. And I wanted to also make sure I understood that it's, you're vested for land use regulations, but you're also vested for any building permit-type regulations back to that first date?
So building code, no, because building code is considered a life safety code. So building codes, also stormwater rules, based on a recent, you may have heard about Snohomish County versus a pollution control hearings board case. And what happened there was the Supreme Court for Washington found that because a stormwater regulation is a state-mandated regulation, it's not optional for cities to have, that you don't vest to it, because it's not a, a, what's the right term for it? A locally discretionary, yeah, locally discretionary set of regulations. You have to have it, and you have to have certain components, the state approves it, and the state gives you a permit to discharge stormwater based on your stormwater rules. So, so those are two sets of regulations that you would not vest to. And that's, you know, that stormwater one was a big one for the development community. It's caused for some uncertainty as to how they proceed with a lot of developments. But building code definitely is one that doesn't apply. But setbacks and those sorts of land use controls really are a package that a project is designed to conform to, and is meant to be applied as it builds out, builds out. Now, if you don't build it in a certain amount of time, you're, you lose that protection of predictability, meaning that when a developer goes forward with a project, they do an analysis around sort of the buildability of their project, marketability, their, all the things that go into it. And they enjoy a level of protection that will allow them full build-out within a reasonable timeframe. But if you don't build it, then that protection goes away based on state law, and then you're subject to rules in place at the time you come in for building permit application.
So on that same paragraph, there's, it says, "In addition, any development projects that are listed," it talks to basically, it speaks about projects that are vested that are also subject to these regulations. Could you help me understand that a little more?
So what happened is, we have had a moratorium here for a bit of time, and we have not been accepting new applications for subdivisions since the date, I think it was, what, October of, October 3rd, yeah. And, and consequently, we don't have any applications that have been submitted prior to, following the passing of the moratorium, and prior to the adoption of these interim regulations. So I'd have to look at what that sentence says. It's... Yeah. So as far as I'm aware, there are no projects, subdivisions. We have had other projects that have come in the door. So for example, reasonable use exceptions, conditional use permits, other types of projects that were not subject to the moratorium, we have been processing. And many of those projects also have similar vesting standards that apply to them. So there are other projects that we have that these rules might not apply to.
I had a couple of comments slash questions, and I mean, I recognize that these are emergency ordinance that's kind of in progress right now, so, for what it's worth. Have you guys talked about, I'm going to presume that the answer to this is yes, but I think it's a valid question for the public to hear about. Have you guys talked through or done some study on making sure that between the rounding, the setbacks, the lot frontage, some of those sorts of things, that you're not inadvertently downzoning a piece of property? So in other words, you end up going through to try to lay it out, and when you comply with all these rules put together, you end up not being able to achieve the R4 that the property is owned for, or the R6, because there's just enough push and shove from each and every side, that you, you end up inadvertently and unintentionally downzoning a development?
So there are many, many, many scenarios that could unfold, right? So we, we have done some mockups, where we've looked at different pieces of property and how they might build out, but we haven't done an all exhaustive analysis of every scenario that might pop up. It goes back to the comment that I had prior around the ripeness of a project. And there are times when a builder might say, hey, you're downzoning my property, but the reality of it is, is that the geometry or some other constraint with, with access or something, street frontage, might just not warrant the project as being viable at that time. You know, developers, even prior to these rule changes, oftentimes had to walk away from a site that might have had, say, 10 units of potential on it, but they could only fit eight. Now, were those rules considered as downzoning? I think it was really more of a question of ripeness and, and ability to, because of existing geometry and existing constraints, conform with the rules. The fact that other cities have been applying these rules, and we haven't, in our conversations with other cities, heard of any sort of takings, claims that have resulted from these types of rules, gives us confidence that these can be applied and development can proceed. It's just a different paradigm that a developer might face with regard to how they design something.
And I think it's the part, the fact that you said that you at least tried to think about it, to me, feels like the, the right answer. So this wasn't done blindly, there was consideration for the appropriateness of the proposed ordinance revisions, to try to make it work, to be reasonable.
Yeah.
I wanted to say, or did you speak? I just wanted, I wanted to have a comment, but are you going to change subject, or are you going to?
No.
Oh, keep going.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission, Jeff Thomas with Community Development. That's a great question by Commissioner Baughman, and to supplement David's answer a little bit more, we have spent serious amounts of time, what I've called reverse engineering lots, building them from the inside out, to see what we end up with in terms of different lot sizes, to Commissioner O'Farrell's question from earlier this evening, looking at how those relate to potential future minimum lot sizes. And so we've run through a lot of different scenarios, we've, we've whiteboarded countless scenarios, Sarah's built some slides that we're, and we're continuing to build more to show different examples. David's correct. When, when we start to get into real-life situations, every single case is going to be different, and no real-life scenario is going to exactly replicate what we've reversed engineered. Everything's going to be different. So to that end, what we're looking forward to here in the month of October is our permit center staff have been setting up a couple of meetings, where the, our regular customers in the development community have been extended invitations to come in and meet with staff. And we're looking forward to a couple of sessions here in October, in advance of the city council's public hearing on November 6th on this matter. Some of you may be aware, when, under state law, when emergency ordinances are adopted relating to land use and zoning controls, without a public hearing in advance, then that jurisdiction has to actually complete a public hearing within 60 days of the date of adoption. So September 18th, November 6th, we're within that 60-day window. So council will have a public hearing that night and, and get to hear from people at that point. In the meantime, we're going to, we're going to have a couple of working sessions with the development community, and we may very well discover some things as real-life examples start to come forward. We've had a few come forward already. One of them, we've started taking a look at internally, a subdivision, a small subdivision, and we're looking forward to kind of working that through and getting to some sort of final design result, working with the, the potential applicant in that case, to see how it comes out. So, anyway, sorry to interrupt, I wanted to, to supplement David's comments there a little bit, so, thank you.
You didn't interrupt at all, sorry. I was just mid-thought, I was thinking, you give me more time, thank you.
Great.
Thanks. Does anybody else have anything else to say?
I'm sorry, I won't.
No, yeah, Mark, you're not done.
Done, so if I can.
Yeah.
Another one that's sort of similar to that, this makes me think a little bit about, if you have, which is pretty common, a parcel that you want to subdivide, and there, there's some parts of it which are marginal, probably buildable, but perhaps more expensive to build on because of the work involved. In some respects, it seems like, for the community, it might be better to allow some clustering with a little bit higher density on one side, and set aside the parts that are marginal, which protects some open space, perhaps contributes to the tree retention. And there's some advantages to that, that this seems like it could defeat. Was there any consideration of that, or how, how might that affect the idea of clustering and preserving open space?
So the clustering and open space requirements in the code remain, they have not been removed. Understandably, your point that there might, these, the side effect of bigger setbacks might result in larger lots, which makes clustering and set-asides more difficult to achieve. One of the problems that we've had with set-asides and clustering is that it's been taken to the far end as much as possible, on more occasions than not. And set-aside and clustering is something that, in my experience, is something is better managed through a process, and I'm not suggesting that we adopt this type of process, but I'm saying that it's something that does work, and that is a planning unit development-type process that offers discretionary design review, so that we're actually guiding a builder and designer into doing the right thing. Because we've seen clustering and set-asides backfire fairly significantly on us here. One case study that we've been looking at recently, that I think we all know about, is the Lancaster Big Rock subdivision. And that's a preliminary subdivision that's been under review, and we've had some complexities around that one, because on the one hand, as you allude to, they are doing the right thing by setting aside a large chunk of the property into perpetual open space and critical areas preservation. But on the other hand, they're now massing what development would have been peppered or spread throughout a large site into one corner, and they're providing, or causing more of a densification, almost like a spot zoning, if you will, right behind a few of the homes, whereas if you were to spread it out, it would be less noticeable. So the downside to clustering is that, if it's not managed properly and does not actually have the right design criteria to go along with it, that affords adequate protection to existing adjacent development, is that it can feel like, say, you're in an R4, and you have a cluster built behind you, it's like an R12. And that's the downside to that. And one of the issues we have with our code is that we don't actually have the design criteria that goes along with clustering. So we are constantly faced with a builder that is trying to build the product that they want, and understandably, they're, they're trying, they're doing what the code allows, but the outcome is not something that we can help guide them through to actually get something that provides protection, or, or reduces that feeling of spot zoning behind someone's existing home when there's clustering going on.
So maybe a somewhat related question as well is, overall, how much flexibility is there in some of these restrictions? You kind of alluded to that a little bit, but if you, if you can imagine someone coming in and they are trying to do the right thing, you know, and that can be, that can mean lots of things, whether that's tree retention, or affordable housing, or, you know, lots of different things. They're trying to do the right thing, but in order to do the right thing, they need a small concession, or they need to have some, you know, opportunity to change something a little bit. How much flexibility do the examiner reviewer, plan reviewers and all, and you have in being able to deal with those?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's two categories really in the code, and there's the inflexible, non-modifiable, and then there's the flexible-modifiable, right? So density, non-modifiable, there's no, it is what it is, right? It's a mathematical equation. The setbacks, for a subdivision, for example, where someone was trying to achieve clustering, or there was some geometry they were working with that was awkward, that we have the administrative adjustment of setbacks that allows us to, within range, and there's criteria for it. So this is an instance where we actually have pretty good criteria that allow us to determine when this is appropriate. And what would happen is, we then would recommend to the hearing examiner, based on that criteria, that, that adjustment be made, or with an approval of a preliminary short plat that doesn't require a hearing examiner, we would grant a, an adjustment of setback that conforms to the criteria. Others are non-negotiable, trying to think of some of the other ones that we had in here, let me just scan down it really quickly.
I think most of us would like to see probably some of the height limitations be pretty non-negotiable, but there may be some instance up against the...
Yeah, the height limitation is non-negotiable. Now, the grading is negotiable. That's something where there is ability to, as determined by the director, but that is also one that we lack criteria for. So we're put into that subjective judgmental position that, that we don't want to be in in that one. So, we're put into that subjective judgmental position that, that we don't want to be in in that one.
I have a, I have, I think, two basic concerns. Some little other ones that are picky, but my basic ones are the minimum lot width, when you increase the lot size, minimum lot size, which I'm grateful for, you still have this 30-foot lot frontage allowed, and everybody is going to go for that 30-foot lot frontage because of the cost of building roads. So, what we're getting is this character that everybody's complaining about. Even the citizens are complaining about it. We're getting these garage-lined streets. When you think that a driveway for a two-car garage could be 20 feet wide, you're going to end up with five feet on each side and no front yard. Perhaps, that's a possibility. So I'm seeing this being very monotonous, unless we have some flexibility in how those lots are placed. It might be that we have so many at the minimum lot width before we have to perhaps turn something. Maybe we have a courtyard access, or something else. And it works better with your larger lot size than it would have with the smaller lot size, because you have the depth now to, and you have the shape of the lot that you can deal with, that gives you the opportunity perhaps to put a courtyard in every now and then. And I mean a driving courtyard, where you access four houses off of one driveway. I don't see an opportunity to do that here. And so, I would really question that 30-foot minimum. That bothers me. The other thing that I'm worried about, and we, we've talked about it for the last 50 years, is the eight-foot fence height. I just think of the guy on the other side of that fence. Here he's got a whole story to maintain, to look at, that's going to be a disaster if he doesn't take care of it. And you're creating a shade condition that perhaps you want a garden or something out there that you can't have now, because we have such a low sun angle. The eight-foot fence, solid fence, just makes us seem more cellular and more divided. And I'm wishing that we could do something more with plant material, or something that may be an open fence up high. Something that gives you some privacy, but not solid, sun-blocking, light-blocking wood fence. That offends me. There are other little things that I have in here, but I, I will let someone else speak while I, while you answer to those, or while maybe you could answer to those for me.
So, handful of observations, I guess, here as well. The first thing that I looked at is, my profession always caused me to look at these zoning matrices, right? These, what the setbacks are and all that. And I look in there about maximum height, and I'm reading about 40-foot, measured from the existing grade at the building wall to the ridge of a pitched roof, or the top of a flat roof. We might want to look at that a little bit more about what that means, because oftentimes jurisdictions give you a bonus, they set a base height, and then they give you a bonus above that if you have a pitched roof of such-and-such pitch, right? And some others measure to the middle of that pitch gable. If you take a flat roof and take it up to that maximum height, it's going to cast a much different shadow, it's going to be a much different feel and look, bulk-wise. So, there may be want to look at that a little more carefully. Another thing that I've, I think that sometimes staff is at a disadvantage when they're looking at these things, because they're looking at them in a vacuum almost, and they don't, they don't feel the peripheral, what's going on around them. So, maybe in your survey requirements, it might be worth extending the boundaries of the survey information that's picked up to allow a little more, kind of take the blinders off a little bit more about what's going on with where the neighboring house is, and where it's at with relationship to some solar angle, or whatever. And speaking of that, I often, the industry's moving towards 3D, a lot of 3D modeling, right? And with 3D modeling, you can actually set your place in the world, latitude and longitude. It knows where the sun's at at any second of the day. And you can do solar studies and all these kind of things. And I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity to increase the requirement for some of that kind of stuff, you know, using technology to kind of predetermine the outcomes of these things a little bit more. I think that there's a lot of opportunities for that. I use the tools every day for that reason. I'll let Jane have a question or two, and then I think I have one more.
I, on your chart, on page 15 of 31, you have down that the side yard setback is 25 feet. Is that a typo? For R4 and R6.
Said page 15, Jane? Of the packet?
15 of 31 of the packet. It says 25 feet. You might want to check that, because I think that must be.
It's probably the rear setback.
It conflicts with.
So is this in the table titled 21A dot 25 dot 030?
It's under residential urban residential zones. And then it says R1, R4, R6, and it gives a side yard setback of 25 feet.
Yes, and if you follow it further down to the footnote that applies, you'll see that that is the aggregate setback, meaning that that is the sum of the two sides.
So 25 feet is the sum of the two sides. Doesn't that conflict with what your other number was in the text?
I'll go back to the slide to demonstrate what we're talking about there. One sec here. Okay, the slide right here. May have to extend it just a sec here. Nope. Basically, what that is, is it's where you have a left and a right, for example. And say the left is 10, and the right is 15, you have 25 total. The minimum required is 25.
So, when you have a minimum lot width of 30 feet, and you have to have a side yard setback of 25 feet, you've got five feet left for your house, right?
In that case, yes. However, if you think about the way dimensions and geometry and lots, lots are not always square. We often see lots with three sides, four sides, a rear, a front. So geometry is not always square. In the instance of a rectangular lot, that say was 30 feet wide and 100 feet deep, for example, yes, you're correct, you would be left with five feet to build the house. But that scenario would probably have somebody push through a variance if it was an existing condition. It wouldn't be a lot that we would see someone create through a subdivision. Instead, what we would see is that, if that was an existing, I think they call them railroad, railroad car lots, or something like that. And what it would do is it would require that somebody submits a variance, and we would just analyze that on a case-by-case basis as they came our way.
But why would you even consider a 30-foot for a minimum lot width if you're going to require 25-feet congregate side yard? Why would you even suggest that 30 feet is a possibility? Even, I don't, the most common, we've seen in all of your graphics here that the most common is a rectangle. And it seems like this is misleading, to say a minimum lot width could be 30 feet.
It's, it's how you measure it with the lot. So oftentimes, you'll see someone have a portion of the lot neck down. We see builders try to do all sorts of things with lot geometry. And what this is saying is that you can't cause your lot to be five feet wide for, you know, long extension on the back. You have to maintain that 30 feet to, so it's usable. It's not saying that that 30 feet is where something will be built. It's just simply saying that no portion of that lot shall be narrower than 30 feet.
Okay, I, I'm with you there, but I'm sure not with you as far as allowing minimum 30-foot lot frontage for lot after lot after lot, and creating a monotonous street front, so.
And these, these are the types of conversations that definitely are held with the subdivision update. These are, you think of these as levers, right? You could put the lever at 30 feet, you could put it at 50 feet, you could put it at 20 feet. And it's up to, you know, our planning commission as appointed officials advisory board to the council to help us navigate through as to what is appropriate for Sammamish. So, you know, that is a starting point, 30 feet of lot frontage. And if you, as part of the subdivision code rewrite and zoning controls rewrite process, wanted to have a conversation about what's appropriate for that specific zoning control, and where you want to move the lever, so to speak, or turn the dial, that's, that's what we would be doing.
Actually, all right, can I, do you have just a quick one? Okay, go ahead.
So I appreciate the effort of trying to change as few words as possible. I can imagine it just being, you know. When you're talking about overhangs, they're, they're talking about eaves. And you talk about 24 inches into a rear yard or a street setback. It doesn't appear there's a side yard setback address in there.
There are two typos in this ordinance, and we are preparing a director's interpretation that will be issued in conjunction with these rules, and that is one of them right there.
And then, so 4C, that talks about 18 inches into interior setbacks, so is that interior setback reference?
That's another one, where that was meant to be a, a side or rear yard setback.
I figure, okay, okay, all right, thank you. Oh, one other thing, it might be worth, I'm always interested in where the regulations we currently have, or the old ones came from. I assume that they had some good reason for establishing the numbers that they did at the time, even if it was King County. And maybe it was only because they had such a large area that they were trying to govern, that it's hard to kind of get too, you know, picky about one area. But it's always, it might be worth asking that question, and finding out why it was the way it was.
Yeah, you know, so I've, I've lived through another code update when I was working for the city of Bellevue, and we did the Neighborhood Livability Initiative, where we actually went through and rewrote many of similar types of rules. Did a lot of research with that. And one of the things we found was that prior generations of codes were written under completely different scenarios where development was different. The pressures for development were different, the things that they were considering were different. You know, now we have really big houses on small lots. Back then, they had, you know, different scenarios than what we're dealing with. So, sometimes understanding what the development patterns were that they were seeing, and the market, and what the market was asking for, is interesting to compare to what the rule is meant to achieve as compared to what we're dealing with today with that same rule. So if you have rules from 1970 that are in place, that are largely lived through somehow, you, maybe those rules are not appropriate for the market, the product of what we're seeing today.
I just wanted to make one comment about, just kind of echoing what Commissioner Brooks said is, with, with daylight on the sides. And I have, I have seen the, it's called daylight plane used, and I wondered if you considered that. That to me seems like it would be one thing worth considering with this emergency ordinance, because it would, it would help with some of these issues of shading and, and how close the houses feel, I thought. That seemed like it also kind of addresses the angle of the roofs and the blockage, and the closeness, and so on. So that would be one thing I think might be worth considering. And then I guess one of my questions is, I, as I saw, thought about this, I of course created a whole list of other things that are more related to the future code update. And I'm curious about what that process will look like. Will you guys want to have comments in advance, or how should we do that? Because I think it's a kind of a natural extension out of this discussion to think about other things that we need to study and maybe make modifications, both for new subdivisions, but also for infill. I'm pretty concerned about infill when you look at what's happened in Kirkland, and Redmond, and Bellevue.
Seattle.
Yeah, well, I won't compare us to Seattle ever, but.
Yes, so to answer your first question, daylight planes are typically coupled in codes with Florida area ratios and volume controls on buildings.
That's another thing on my list.
Yeah, so, so we, we have a fairly long list of things that we've considered, and we want to be bringing to you in one shape or form as part of the subdivision code rewrite process. Going back to our objectives, given that we have an objective of minimal language changes, adding things like Florida area ratios and daylight plane becomes more complex, because you're adding a whole new element to the code. Controlling just a basic building height from between two points is something that we already do. So it was something we felt we could actually immediately apply without having to deal with some of the turbulence that comes along with adding Florida area ratios and, and daylight plane to the code. Although those are great tools, and having lived through that addition to the code in Bellevue, it was a really great addition to the code.
So will the code update exercise in the future be wide-ranging enough to discuss some of those things?
Yes.
Just a comment to the commission. I feel like when we go through this code update next spring, I feel like I need a construction speak class. Because for those of us who know what daylight planes are, there's a couple of us that don't. So I think I need a little class.
We will, we will also try when we bring technical jargon to the table to provide maybe a visual drawing. In the case of daylight plane, it's simply providing access to the sun's azimuth, is that what it's called? Which is where, you know, that you always, at any time of the year, will have access to some sort of sunlight. It's been a big problem with some developments where large homes go in, especially when they're lined up a certain way, that you might have had access to the sun, and now, now you don't at all.
Right.
But for the peak summer days, right?
Okay, yeah, gotcha. Okay, yeah, class might be good.
They'll bring us along. I know they'll bring us along, they always do. Okay, well, what I wanted to say tonight is that I really appreciate and applaud staff and city council for the thoughtful analysis that went into constructing these new interim regulations. I really appreciate them. I think that they provide answers to a lot of the general frustrations that we're typically hearing when we're out in public. It's like, the whole point about ripeness is such an important one, because when we hear all the complaints about quality in the city of Sammamish, and the types of buildings that are being built, and how it seems that residents are very unhappy with that type of quality, I think that what we want in the city are quality subdivisions that we can be proud of, that we can sort of point to and say, wow, look at that beautiful subdivision. You know, I want my family to live there, I want my friends to live there, go check that out, go see that. You know, we don't want to be constantly saying. You know, we don't want to be constantly saying, oh, in Highcroft, look at, you know, look what happened there. You know, we want something that we can be proud of. And it takes time to acquire the property that is necessary to build developments that we can be proud of. And so, you know, these regulations make it so that, in my opinion, that, you know, developers will have to wait a little bit. And in my opinion, it's not about thwarting development necessarily or, you know, reducing the number of units or density that's allowed in a certain area. It's more about just waiting for the right time so that we can have developments that we're proud of. And it's about having higher expectations in the city of Smamish as to the types of buildings that we allow to be in our city. So I really am thankful for the new regulations, and I look forward to subdivision code update where we can get to even deeper details. But I also want to point out to everyone that these are in place right now, right? I mean, this ordinance is in, and the ordinance that we have as part of Exhibit 1 is currently what is allowable in the city of Smamish, right? So, I mean, we can have our comments about what we think is right or not right, but that's what the city council decided on, and I think that's good for six months. So we have some time to think about the regulations and maybe tweak them here and there, like you said, using the levers to really specify what we want. But I just really wanted to say thank you for all the work that's been done.
I'd like to follow up, and I'll take the next eight minutes to do this, then I can extend the meeting. So I guess, first, that was elegant, what I just heard from the chair. And before she spoke, I was so impressed and had a mad admiration for the dialogue that was going on tonight. And sit here, the other members of the commission, planning commission, definitely have done their homework and thought things over and articulated it, and the dialogue was, I thought, almost perfect. And I want to follow up, there was a hidden thing in the chairs. First of all, I've just complimented the other planning commission members, now I want to say, before you fall asleep tonight, reflect on the time and effort that the staff put into this. And I think that's enough said, they worked hard at this, it's very evident. But one of the things that I don't think we've, the chair started to mention, realizing the city council has already looked at what we're seeing tonight, now the planning commission is looking at it, and it's no longer a solo mission, but it's going to be a joint journey between those two bodies. And it's, it's not perfect, but collectivity does work out many times. And there are parts that are on the outskirts of all this that make up the village, the other stakeholders, the citizens, the developers. I think this is, it's, again, there's a lot of weeds here to look at and a few to pull. But I think we're going to go ahead, and we're going to have a very great product. And I'm pleased and proud to live in Smamish.
Very nice.
So, do we extend?
Oh, yes, we might as well extend because I think we have some public comment.
I move to extend to the meeting till 8:45.
There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 8:45. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so the meeting's been extended to 8:45 unanimously. And of course, we always try to beat that if possible. So if there aren't any more questions, then we can move on to public comment? Good? Okay. So I will open public comment now for the agenda items tonight. So anyone wishing to speak has seven minutes to come up and speak. Mary, why don't you come first?
Hi, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. First of all, thank you for a really excellent presentation, discussion, great questions, really important things to think about. I just wanted to add a few things. First, I was really glad to see that you're doing slopes in your examples. I do want you to know there's a septic factor, there's at least 3,500, if not up to 7,000 septics in the city, and when you cut a wall, stuff flows through. So it's really important that that's thought about. I believe also when I read the packet that you do five feet of grade change. I believe you need a retaining wall when you're doing four or more, and you need to get a permit for that. I believe Redmond uses four feet for their, you need to get your clear and grade permit. The other thing, I think it's actually an error in the old code. If you call King County and you ask Kurt Crawford, who runs the stormwater division, if you're even grading one square foot in a critical area, you need to have a clear and grade permit. And that isn't how our code is written. If you look at what Redmond's is, you'll find out that you have to do that. And I know from the years I've spent at meetings, I've heard a lot of people stand up and say, hey, this development's happening, and they went and cleared and graded the wetland or the whatever area, and it was gone before anybody even knew it, so you can't measure and see what it was before. I think that we need to have the clear and grade permit, particularly for critical areas, do the zero square feet, and I can show you where those are in Department of Commerce and/or, I think, one of the ecology critical area guidances. So I think that's very important. Stormwater is definitely affected when you're, the lady from UW extension is part of the urban forestry tree management program, I don't remember her name, but she said one thing that the city does that's really different than everywhere else is we just allow the constant scraping of the land clear. And she said that really needs to change, so I'm glad you're working on that. But when you do that, you're taking away the native soils. You can't use low-impact development because you need native soils, or you need to amend the soils. And I know there's a development kind of over by Main Street, they're piling up the dirt like two houses high, and that compresses the soils as well. And when you compress things, you're not going to get that. So I think that's really important to think about as well. So anyway, I'm glad to see some of the changes, and you didn't really say it, but like if a single lot exists, you can build one house on it. A short plot is two to nine, and a subdivision is 10 or more, these would apply to any of those three cases, is that correct? So you're talking about like an existing lot that's either R4 or could be a big lot. If you're doing even a small subdivision, or a small short plot for even just two lots, it would apply. So I really think we need to think about those. I'm glad you guys talked about daylight. I will echo what Jane Garrison said, and I brought someone to help me size things up here. So I know David Pyle's really tall, and I know James Eastman is 6'7", and I don't know how tall Jeff Thomas is, but I know they have to bend over. So I brought to me LeBron James. I'm 5'7", I'm 5'8" with my shoes on, and six feet is right here, right about his chin. So on a regular six-foot fence, I can't see over it, like, no way. And if I stand on my tippy toes, I can reach about seven and a half feet. Now LeBron James is six foot eight, and I'm sure with his, I think he can jump 40 inches, so he can probably jump to see over an eight-foot fence. An eight-foot fence, this is a cedar board from a deck project that I'm working on, eight feet is really tall. And if it's close to you, like if James Eastman came and stood next to me, I'd feel like he's in my personal space and ask him to back up. And I think the same thing, the same thing, the same thing needs to happen with the fence. If you're going to do the eight-foot fence, I don't think it should be allowed to be put on the property line. I think the person who's screening themselves, and they need to move it back on their property so that the person, and I'm from Bozeman, Montana, and I just read their code, and that's exactly what they do when they have an eight-foot fence, there are setbacks for it. And they don't really allow them very often. Also, I don't really like fences in general. I think they really don't have people talk to each other, except when they drag their garbage cans down the road and they talk that day. In Montana, we have wildlife-friendly fences, we have gaps at the bottom so bunny rabbits and other things can run through. We have different screening. I know when I was reading the trail stuff, because I went to a lot of those public hearings and the hearing examiner, if you have a fence for so long, it has to be broken up. I'm really worried about what Jane called the cubicle problem, though, oh, we're building a two-lot short plot, or a five-lot short plot, or a 20-lot, and everybody has a fence around. So the character of Smamish is get a new development, put a fence around it, get a new development, and then the wildlife can't walk, the people can't walk, the people don't meet the people on the other side of the fence. I think that's very important. And I'm going to hate to say this, arbovada are not native plants, but I guess I'd rather have arbovadas than wood fences everywhere. But I do think you need to have the gaps in between there. So there's a lot of things that you can do with fencing. I would like to see them not encouraged, I would like to see them almost never eight feet. I did drive by a couple when I was driving around last couple days and saw them, and they're pretty towering. And I think you have a stability problem, but it's like having a great big wall. And I'll tell you a lot on the older houses, people only have eight-foot root or ceilings in their houses. So you're putting a fence that's as high as people's ceilings are, and that's just, that's a pretty incredible structure. So I really want you to think about that one. I do understand that there would be applications for it. In your one example where you had the smaller house and then you had the tiered house, that's cool and that looks good, but that's still a monolithic structure that's building next to you. Maybe that house doesn't need to be 35 feet tall, or there needs to be other screening things. And I think the trees, where the trees exist are super important, because if you're cutting the roots or if you're taking out trees, you're creating single soldiers that are going to fall on people, and then you actually have a safety problem and you can't keep the trees. So there's a lot of that. And there's also been people that have talked that people came next door, they built stuff on them, and they put the water there, and because the water was there, it made the tree roots weaker and the trees fell. So I think where the stormwater goes is super important. So anyway, you did an excellent job with speaking about the interim regulations, I'm glad to have the time to speak here, and I hope that I made a little bit of impression here on size. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Victor, Mrs. Victor, sorry.
Good evening, Commission, Paul Stickney, 226-26, Northeast Inwood Hill Road. I agree with these interim regulations. As I've chatted with people over the last several years at city meetings, there's been a lot of discussion about having the newer subdivisions return a little bit to the, you know, subdivision size of the past. And I think that this is a step in that way. A couple of comments. On the eight-foot fence, I think it would be really cool if on the chart that showed the eight foot on the three sides and the four foot on the front, add the words "up to." So up to four feet, up to eight, because I was kind of reading it the first time, making it sound like you almost had to have an eight. And it would be cool if there was a little asterisk on the side that said "up to eight" that says "from zero to six," or "from one to six," whatever, do not need a building permit, and from six to eight does. It would just inform somebody who's reading the code, just a little information on that fence. I agree with the idea of adding, you know, PUD to our code. That would be a little bit of a heavy lift, but it would be something that I think that for the future goes to what Commissioner Garrison and Brooks have been talking about is certain types of smaller-scale neighborhood mixed use could be done under, you know, PUD, maybe under a subarea plan, but could also be, you know, PUD. A comment on Commissioner Garrison's comments on 30 feet. Two things I've observed in real estate, on a cul-de-sac, many lots come together, and that's where the 30 feet is. Or on a curve in a road, sometimes on the concave side, I think I have that right, you would have some of those lots coming in at the 30 feet and expanding. So the only thing that is, and I don't mean the word substantial, and I won't use the word controversial, I think it's somewhere in between those two. Do these regulations apply to existing built houses, which is the vast majority of our city? Let's, let's take Highcroft, which everybody is not the happiest with. None of those houses would fit these current regulations. So if one burns down in 10 years from now, is its footprint rebuildable or grandfathered or not? Let's take somewhere else, I'm going to make something up. Let's take Hampton Woods, which has nice large lots. But say for argument's sake, one of those houses is within six feet of one line and maybe a 20 on the other. Well, the current rules say 10. So if somebody wants to, in the future, 10 to 20 years from now, take down a house that was built in '78 to '82 and rebuild new, can they stay within the footprint of where that house was? Or does it have to move in to the new regulation? And second part, that would be somebody who chose to do that. If a house caught on fire and burned down, which is usually not someone's choice, can that stay within that grandfathered footprint or not? And that, I think, actually is a real issue and applies to a vast majority of the houses here. And maybe I missed it, and if I did, apologize, but I didn't see that talked about in here, and I think that's an interesting thing to talk about existing houses and their footprints in regards to this code.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. I had thought of that while we were talking and forgot to ask, just specifically to the burned-down scenario.
You could rebuild it in the same footprint.
Same footprint?
Mm-hmm.
Does that only apply to fires?
No.
Anything?
You could actually expand on it, so long as you don't make it more non-conforming. Say, for example, the code said that you had to have a 15-foot setback, but your house was built under the old rules at five feet. You could continue that five-foot line of nonconformity, but you can't make it more nonconforming.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'd also point out that if one house in Highcroft burns down, they're all going to burn down. Because there's not enough room for firefighters to get in there and do much of anything.
Oh, my goodness. Good point. Okay, does anyone else want to speak tonight? Mr. Eastman?
You want to extend to Eric?
I think we're okay, we'll make it.
So I've been cut down to a minute and a half, but that's okay. So rumor has it, when Brother Brigham Young.
You're fixed.
Famous Mormon pioneer was leading the wagon trains down in the Salt Lake Valley. He sent some wagon trains back up to say, hey, go tell them this is the place. And when they did their U-turn, there was a lot of cursing. Brother Brigham Young said, hey, we developed the Salt Lake Valley, we're going to make our streets so wide that no wagon trains are going to curse when they turn around. So I don't know who's been to Utah or Salt Lake, but they have massive streets and they have this Mormon grid pattern. When you're in Utah, you don't need a phone, ever, to find an address. You just, they say 3300 North and 400 West, and you just say, okay, 33 is here, 4 West is there, and you count, and you can find anything. And it's great, and it's like one of the ideals for planning. When you come to Washington, we don't have the ideal, do we? I mean, when you fly in, you see the Puget Sound and all these little crevices, and you see canyons and lakes, and, you know, we don't have the ideal, but yeah, we have 405 that, you know, it's going to have a hard time, me and Widen, to have all the traffic. We have Lake Smamish that causes us issues, we have the NDA with no streets going east-west, we have all sorts of things that we work around. So I mean, this place isn't a great place, and that we shouldn't live here because we can't meet the ideal? No, this is a great place. In that regard, has anybody on the, or on the planning commission been to Seabrook, Washington?
No.
Jane's been there. Mark's been there. Eric? Everyone else got to go there. You got to, I almost asked the city to fund a retreat there, just so everyone can see that you can have character and density. And I think, you know, we say this town has a development problem. I don't think it's a development problem, I think it's a character problem. Mark, do you like Seabrook? Is it dense?
Mm-hmm.
It's very dense, but they use alleys, they use all sorts of different visual tricks to lead the eye away, landscaping. to, to lead the eye away, landscaping for cover. And, you know, even, they have a tour there. Everyone in the Planning Commission, I would recommend you to go on a Saturday tour where they lead you through the city and they tell you all about it. But, you know, it is, there, you can build density with character, which leads me to these, these setback regulations. I mean, we're in Washington, land is scarce here. I mean, the only place left to build is over the mountains, really. I mean, people commute from Clealum, Ellensburg, there's nowhere to go. So, land is scarce, and when we say we're going to have houses, on average, are going to be 25 feet apart. I think where in the world have I seen houses that are 20 feet apart, five feet apart? Even when land wasn't scarce, when my great-grandmother grew up in Ballard, or, you know, my dad in Capitol Hill, the houses there are not even 20 feet, five feet apart, but yet they had, you know, all of Sammamish, Redmond, Bellevue, wasn't even developed. They had all the land you could imagine to build on back then, but nobody built houses 25 feet apart. So, I think about where have I seen houses that are 25 feet apart? I pull up Zillow, and I say, oh, okay, yeah, I can get a house there in that neighborhood for $2 million bucks that's 25 feet apart. I go to Sammamish Ridge, a mile down from my house, oh, those are 25 feet apart, and those are $4 million. So, I think we have to be super careful when we pass these regulations, because we get unintended consequences. And we just got done with a housing strategy, and we're, I think we're at like $900,000 for a house here. And that's for one of these crappy ones that everyone's complaining about. I mean, if we get our ideal house that's 25 feet apart, that, what does that add in land cost for that developer? I mean, that's probably another $400,000. You just pushed your median house price up by $400,000. One of the other reasons they, you find mass grades is they mass grade to balance the site. You have your roads, and you're only limited to 15%. So, you come in, you grade all your roads, you get everything to 15%, you match, you stockpile all your topsoil, and then you put it back down. At the end of the day, you did all that with dozers, with off-road dump trucks, and you are at net zero for soil. My fear is, we're going to come in here, we're going to put all our roads in, and they only go 15%, but these lots are going to be high or low and all these weird, you know, weird existing topography. And then a homeowner or somebody else is going to get that lot, and they're going to, or the builder even, is going to have to, they're going to have to haul off so much soil out of there when they dig their foundations, their footings. That's a huge cost. I mean, where do you haul soil from, from Sammamish? Where's the nearest place? You got to put it somewhere. So, there's a lot of cost implications. And then the homeowner that wants to landscape or make a flat garden, or, I mean, it's going to cost money, a lot of money. I'd like to have a cost, have, have them do a cost study on what's it's going to cost. So, that leads me to, okay, so what if a builder just says, you know, I can't, I can't do this. I could either put three giant customs in here, and I think that's the unintended consequence of all this. I'm just going to build three custom, huge houses, massive estates, because that's how I'm going to get my money back, make my investment work out. My question to David and Jeff is, are there alternatives? Can I build townhomes in an R4 right now? No townhomes, can I build duplexes?
I'd have to look at the code to answer that accurately.
So, you know, maybe do condos, but the, the cost of this is going to be astronomical. And we just got done with the housing strategy. I feel great about it. I thought, wow, you know, we did a good job. I think, you know, we're getting somewhere. We can do character, we can do density. I don't know if Seabrook has a development code, or, you know, a city that actually has character. Can you put that in a code? You know, Paul's commenting with PUD, I agree with that. But I'm afraid that these density, or these new development regulations, are just going to add a ton of costs, and land is so scarce, I think it, you know, it is going to equate to a downzone. And we say, well, if you can't do it, then don't do it, but that's at the micro level. But if that's the case on the macro level, you know, we wouldn't have the city of Sammamish. We don't have perfect roads that go through. We don't have connectivity, we don't have anything that's ideal. So, does that mean we shouldn't have housing here? No. Just means we have to figure out a way to do it and do it with character. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else like to speak? No? Okay. Oh, Jeff needs to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before the director speaks, 35-second, no, extension, let's extend to 9 o'clock and be safe.
Speaker.
There's a motion and a second to extend the meeting to 9 o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The meeting's been extended till 9.
I'll be quick, I promise. Good evening again, Jeff Thomas with Community Development. Just a couple of comments regarding your work session here this evening. Really good questions, really good comments, and you've given us some things to think about here over the coming weeks as we work through the month of October, leading up to the, the public hearing with City Council on November 6th on the emergency ordinance. I wanted to speak just briefly to two things. One is where we go beyond November 6th with this, this, this area of subject matter. And then the second thing I wanted to speak to, which I'll, I'll get to after that, is the Planning Commission calendar a little bit through the end of the year. So, the first item, where we go beyond November 6th. These regulations, as the, both David and the Commission correctly pointed out here this evening, are good for 180 days, six months from the date of adoption. So, we're looking at mid-March, I believe, would be the, the expiration of them. Once we go through the, the public hearing on November 6th, and we, we close out that initial period of review and, and public input, we'll start to then focus forward and put together a scope of work that will likely take these regulations along with other matters that you've raised here tonight, the public is starting to raise, and that we learn along the way, and probably craft that into Phase 1 of the larger subdivision and zoning standard code update, which has been on our work program funded by Council last year and is, is currently on our work program. In terms of the broader, larger project itself, it's probably going to go on for, I would anticipate, a number of months, possibly into, you know, the end of '19, even the beginning of 2020. What David and I primarily are going to be charged with for the city is, is really taking a lot of existing code and chunking it out into manageable pieces with, like, subject matter, so that I anticipate we'll probably have a number of phases of this project that will roll forward, again, with, with what we're talking about here this evening and some other related matters will be part of really Phase 1. And all the different phases will move through the regular legislative review process, which you're all familiar with at this point. Staff brings something to Planning Commission, we have some public outreach, you ultimately have a public hearing, make some recommendations to City Council, and they kind of repeat the, that process at their level. So, that's that. So, stay tuned on that. We'll, we'll be getting that scheduled here again. We're, we're kind of in this interim period, pardon the pun, trying to get through to November 6th, and then we'll, we'll start quickly looking beyond November 6th and talk about a schedule at that point. In regards, just quickly to the schedule for the rest of the year for the Planning Commission, we have, beyond this evening, I think we have, oh, what, four meetings left for the rest of the year. Two of those meetings, being your next meeting in October and then your first meeting in November, you'll be focused on the thing that we all love to focus on, which is the docket for, for 2019. That's for the process, the first part, the first step in the process to work towards amending our comprehensive plan once per year. I'm very pleased to report that the docket consideration list for this year is quite small. In fact, there are only three items. You'll recall last year, I think we may have had, I don't know, 11, 12? I'm not sure what the final number was, but three items. Two of them are city-initiated items, and one of them was initiated by one of our esteemed citizens and active participants, Mary Victor. So, so we're going to have a work session on that at your next meeting, and then we'll have a public hearing on November 1st, and you'll make some recommendations on those things to City Council. So, that gets us into November, tentatively November 15th. Kelly, I believe, is going to come in and present to you some information related to Town Center and implementation strategies. And not to put Kevin on the spot, but I believe he might be working on a little bit of a surprise presentation for the Commission for that night to do a little recap of your hard work in 2018 and where it all ended up. So, and then your final meeting of the year, which will be December 6th. David Goodman will be back with the next iteration of the Urban Forest Management Plan. And I believe he and our consultant will be talking to you that evening about implementation strategies. So, and that will get us through the year. So, with that, thank you for the time.
And what about October 9th? Just a reminder to all Commissioners.
Oh, yes, thank you. October 9th is not a Planning Commission meeting, but the City Council, of course, has invited the Commission to sit down in a work session-style format, the horseshoe here in the main area of the floor, to talk about the, the Sammamish homegrown recommendation from the Commission that the Council is currently considering. So, thank you for reminding me. So, that'll be Tuesday at 6:30 next week.
Tuesday, 6:30?
Yes.
Tuesday, 5:30?
I believe it's 6:30, but we'll confirm via email for the Commission.
Okay.
I know it's the first thing, it will be the first item on the Council's work session agenda that evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a quick question for Jeff.
Sure.
So, with these interim regulations, so on November, sorry, yeah, when do we have the public comment? November 8, right?
November 6.
November 6.
Mm-hmm.
So, but from then onwards, you know, we have public comment, and then we start working on the actual regulations. Do these still stay in effect even after public comment, or what happens to them?
Unless the Council was to take some sort of legislative action to either repeal the regulations by ordinance or amend them by ordinance, it would take an ordinance to, for the Council to, to amend or repeal them in any way.
But, so they'll, if it...
They, they would be, unless they do that, they're in effect for six months.
Okay.
As, as interim regulations.
Okay.
If the city, beyond November 6th, was to work through a, a regular legislative review process and then take further action by ordinance at some point within that six months to adopt those regulations, or, or some variation of those regulations as permanent regulations, then the permanent regulations would supplant the interim regulations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And that's actually our goal, would be to get Phase 1 completed with Council within the six months. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item of the agenda is adjournment.
Would I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the meeting is adjourned at 8:54.